Good evening. Thank you for attending tonight's Wednesday, November 6th, school committee meeting. We actually started our meeting at 4:00 PM for a workshop with Dr. Kalise Hornum, which was fantastic. We all loved her, loved the workshop, it was great. And then we went into executive session, so now we're in our regular session. And so, we'll begin with public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like... Oh, actually, I'm sorry, we pledged the flag, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, equal and just. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to make a public statement this evening? Okay. So, our first item on reports and presentations, just my only bit of correspondence is from the Board of Select, the Select Board, and there will be a joint meeting with the Finance Committee and Upper Cape Tech School Committee on November 19th at 7:00 PM at the police station. So, please mark your calendars, because that is a regular school committee meeting, and we'll get to talk about the town's budget for the schools. Student advisory spotlight for N. High School and community events. So, I'll turn it over to Addie.
Hi. So, it's been a month since Spirit Week, and all the events that unfolded that week, but we felt like it was still worth mentioning, because it is the best week at the high school. And so, I'm here to present on Spirit Week, and there's also a surprise event to present on at the end that does not do Spirit Week. So, obviously, Spirit Week is defined by the spirit days that go on throughout the week. So, the first day was Monday, anything but a backpack, so students brought a variety of items to school, including suitcases. I brought a laundry basket. And at the younger levels, this was translated into a VPS Purple Day, because we felt like the kids might not, it might not be the best suited Spirit Week Day for the younger kids. But at the high schools, anything but a backpack. And so, it's also worth mentioning that this Spirit Week was a district-wide thing, so all kids at all schools got to participate in the Spirit Week, and it really helped foster the sense of community between each of the schools, and I thought it was really interesting. Tuesday was Pink Out for Breast Cancer Awareness, as October was Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I couldn't find any pictures of that, but I assure you that everyone was very pink. Wednesday was Jersey versus Jersey Shore, and so we had some people dressed up as people from New Jersey. We also had some people donning their jerseys. At the younger levels, this was just Jersey Day again. Thursday is everyone's favorite day of the week. It was pep rally, and so this was different this year, because we usually hold pep rally on Friday, because the homecoming game is usually on Friday, but this year it was on Thursday. And so, every, each class wore their respective colors. Freshmen were white, sophomores were red, juniors were blue, and seniors were black. And there was actually an interesting spin on this this year. At the younger levels, their Spirit Week Days, the younger kids got to pick which color they wore, and then points would be accumulated and given to the class that had the most people wearing their color. So, we actually have... Oh, sorry. There's my surprise. Oh, two more, sorry. We actually had some eighth grade guests at the pep rally, and so, our entire eighth grade, not just eighth grade athletes, got to come up and experience the pep rally at the high school. And this was a great bridge between the two grades, because they got to experience, which is one of the best, the pep rally, which I think is one of the best events at the high school. And also, some of the band students got to play with the high school band students, which I thought was amazing, and that hopefully brings more students into our high school band program. Also, more about the pep rally, the juniors actually won the pep rally this year sadly, because they won the most games. But also, Spirit Week was won by the grade that accumulated the most points through attending school games, dressing up for Spirit Week Days, buying merch from the Decca stand, and also who won the most pep rally games. So, the juniors won. The Thursday night, the fun didn't end. We had the homecoming game, and this year we did something different. Instead of doing hallways, which many of you didn't get to experience, because they were just in high school, we did homecoming floats. And I thought the homecoming floats were so fun. I actually got to walk alongside mine, and it was just such a great experience getting to like, hear the cheers of everyone, and just see all the hard work we've done, and it was great. In the bottom, that's the sophomores with Alice in Wonderland. And the seniors actually won this year. We won Tangled. And so, it was just a lot of fun, and I think it's a great new tradition. It was an old tradition that we brought back, so I'm excited to see that. And also, picture at the top is our homecoming court, which has students represented from each grade. Friday, it's the classic USA Day. It's everyone's favorite day to dress up in. Teachers and students alike, as you can see. And, yeah, then Friday night is the big event, the homecoming dance. And the homecoming dance was a big success. We had a snack bar, DJ, homecoming court, all the usual things we have, and we had a couple hundred attendees, and it was just a lot of fun for everybody. And then, my surprise event was, I'd be remiss if not to mention the spaghetti supper, although it doesn't have to do with Spirit Week, that was just another big event that happened in October. And so, they had a DJ with dancing, they had a book fair, costume contest, and obviously spaghetti. And this raised a lot of money for the PTA, and had BMS teachers and PTA parents volunteering alongside each other. And it's just a great event, and it brought the younger grades together and the community as a whole. So, that's that.
Good job.
Anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Addie?
Addie, I will say, I met your younger sibling at the pep rally.
He's here.
I don't know if you knew he was talking to me, but he was very sweet, and he said, "I'm wearing black today, because, do you know my sister?" And that's how I got to meet him, and he was really proud of you, so...
I was trying to recruit some middle schoolers, so I wear their black, but...
Yep, well, he did. He was proud.
Yes, good success, and K-12 was already a month ago.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Addie. Right. So, I'd like to, with your permission, take a few things out of order.
Sure.
We definitely want to do the teacher recognition of My Jersey Your Impact first, and I'm wondering, Dr. McGuire, if you'd like to lead that, and I'll do the slideshow?
Great.
Okay, great. So, I'll let you lead that and call folks up.
So, this was our second year of doing My Jersey Your Impact, and our booster, football boosters took the lead in helping our senior players to pick a staff member of their choosing, K through 12, that made an impact in their life. And so, this is a really special culmination, not just of football, but of the relationships that they've had with teachers, with coaches, and it's a way to kind of pay that acknowledgement forward. So, we're so fortunate to have five of our football players here and some of their teacher recipients, and I thought it would be special for you to hear in their own words why they selected the teacher that they did. First up, we have Vinnie Bohm.
That microphone picks up for the cable, so thank you firsthand, Mary.
Of course. I chose Ms. Stroh, because she's amazing, and I'm new to Bourne this year. I can't say much. I play quarterback, but she made me really feel like a canalman, which, you know, it's tough at first in a new school, but she welcomed me on the first day, and, yeah, I mean, just made me feel at home, and I really feel like I'm part of the school because of her. So, that's really why I chose her. Thank you.
That's great.
Hi, I'm Albert Guest. I give my game jersey to Mr. Farrington, my science teacher, because of how he respects me, and I respect him back, and how he would help me get back on task when I would get distracted on other stuff, and how he was pretty cool, and he was my favorite science teacher all my entire high school year. And he's a cool teacher in my book. I thank you, school... What does it say?
Committee.
Committee. Thank you.
Tristan?
Oh, yeah, I got it written down. I can admit, in the past, I didn't get the best grades, and I tended to almost never do the work, but throughout that, McCarthy never gave up on me, and he never lost hope. He was always the one to tell me that I could make the turnaround, and he was always there to support me and welcome me in his classroom no matter what. Thank you.
Isaiah couldn't be here with us, but he wanted to share that Ms. Fornier was his staff member of choice, because she always creates that sense of community and welcomes him into her classroom. It's a safe space, a welcome space, and he's part of our music family, so he wanted to thank Ms. Fornier.
My name is Ryan Anderson. I chose Mr. Doughty. He was my middle school teacher for science and math, and then I also had him for engineering tech. He taught me a lot of the morals that I live by, and the way that I'll go about certain things depending on the situation. I found a lot of hardships, and he'd see it in a heartbeat. If I came into class, my eyes were low hung. If I couldn't comprehend something, he'll pull me aside, and five minutes later, him and I were tag teaming it together. He made me feel like I could go to somebody like, it was like a coach in school for outside of sports. I didn't have someone to go to. He's right there in front of me, he's right there with me, somebody I could count on and genuinely rely on. So, that's why I chose Mr. Doughty.
Wow.
I chose Ms. Hendrickson, or as I like to call her, Ms. Hage. I chose her because coming to Bourne as a new student, seeing all these classes and adjusting to them, it was easy to come into her class, because she always came to help me, especially, especially because I've never taken an art class. So, it was just really nice to get her the jersey and have her support the whole thing.
Before you guys sit down, could we ask the teachers to come up and stand with your folks? Is that okay? I want to give you a big round of applause. I know all of you want to...
I teach science. Albert was the one who gave me that award. Thank you very much, Albert. It actually had a humongous impact on me. I'm trying not to cry, but it was. Teaching's tough. Doing it for 20, 21 years, something like that, and, you know, you don't always feel like you have an impact on somebody. You kind of do, but when this happens, and Albert, you know, was genuine about it, I'm sure he was begrudging about coming to do this, which is great, Albert, right? Which I understand, so it's even more of an impact for him to come up and do this for me, too. So, I really appreciate it, Albert, and it pretty much made my last 20 years. I appreciate it.
If you want to...
I know. I know we're all talking.
Vinnie gave me his shirt, and what he didn't share with you is that our first interaction was that I might have teased him about the Canal Cup, and he wanted to come over to the winning side this year. That might have been how I welcomed him to Bourne. I think, you know, I might cry, I will cry, I do cry. I think that this was a huge honor, and I think you'll hear that from all of us. It really touched me, and really, but I think more importantly, what these guys don't understand is the impact that students have on teachers. And we get as much out of them as we hope that we impose on you guys, and this is quite an honor, and I'm very, very grateful. Thank you, Vinnie.
You don't have to say anything if you don't want to.
Some of you know me, so you know that I really hate public speaking, but I really, really appreciate this, and when he came into my room to give it to me, like, it was, it really did, like Jeff said, it really, like, it made my year. Like, it made me feel really special, and like, I have an impact, and it's just really important, and, yes. Thank you.
I'm Steve McCarthy. Tristan was gracious enough to give me the shirt, and I've had a few jaws in my time, but this is the only one that you get something back, you know, not monetary, but you get this nice warm feeling, once in a while, and, seriously, no. At this time, I got that nice warm feeling, thanks to Tristan and his shirt, so, thank you.
Maybe get with your teacher that you...
I don't have that privilege.
I mean, I'm the tallest, I should be in the bathroom.
Here we go.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down tonight. Thank you so much for coming tonight. You guys did a great job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, let us know.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thanks. Bye. Bye, guys. Thank you.
So, what I'd like to do next is go into the benchmark presentation?
Okay.
And then, we'll do the votes for the grants.
Yes.
That's okay? And then, we'll do the announcements.
Thank you. Bye. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Bye, guys. I just love, I have to say, that is probably my very favorite thing that this district does. I think it is, it is just impactful, and I think it's so important that we show, you know, how much of an impact these kids have, these teachers have on the kids. It's just, I love it. Absolutely, and I love it. I would like to also thank Tammy Kelly for bringing it to the Bourne Public Schools. She's amazing.
So, I'll kick you off, so, yeah, I know, it's hard to follow that up. I'm very appreciative that they came down tonight to share that with us. So, at the Curriculum Subcommittee meeting, there was a presentation on benchmarking that we felt would be great to bring to the full committee. So, we do have tonight a few folks who will explain that and walk you through it, but please know that it was already presented to the full curriculum sub, and also know that my partner in crime and right-hand person, Barbara, is representing us at WhoStep, which is, you know, our partners down in Woods Hole, and they have this special dinner and presentation once a year. So, that's why she can't be here, otherwise she would have been. So, we have the amazing Jessie Clements to start us off, and I believe you're going to partner with some other folks at a certain time, am I right? Someone else will come up?
I think I'll do the secondary piece, and then the second half is elementary, and so there'll be Noel and Liz will come up.
All righty.
Okay, so, benchmarking. I'm going to speak to kind of what our benchmarking process is at the middle school and the high school. We offer a number of benchmarks for our students. A writing benchmark, Galileo is a, in the past, it's been a pre-made benchmark that we've given in math and ELA and science. I'll talk a little bit about how we revised the Galileo Benchmark for this year. We also, at the middle school, use iXL for ELA and math, which provides kind of like a one-time benchmarking option and ongoing, like, in the moment where our students kind of rating in their ELA and their math. And then, in social studies, we use document-based questions, and because of the shift to an eighth-grade MCAS, we are also in eighth grade focusing in on some tasks that really align to what the civics expectations are. And so, again, some more information around what these, what these benchmarks are and kind of how we use them. So, and we have a writing prompt and a civics task, sorry, and DBQs. We look at the results during our common planning time, our curriculum time at the middle school. Both schools have data teams, and we have a secondary literacy committee that, again, is looking at the variety of data to see how we can best inform supporting our students in class and during our wind block. Galileo, we received feedback from teachers at the secondary level that, and we did a, we did some research, Christine and I did some research last year around just making sure our Galileo Benchmarks really match the standards that are assessed on the MCAS. So, what we did, we went through a bunch of meetings and decided that we would revise our benchmarks through Galileo to really make sure that the standards that are assessed on the MCAS, I mean, I was literally looking at the list of standards that were assessed on last year's and the year before test, and recreating benchmarks to truly align with that. We also wanted to make the tests a little bit shorter to make sure that it was a nice, focused, students were focused, they weren't worried about, like, oh, it's going to go into the next class period or take too long, so to get some really important data there. So, again, that's Galileo for math, ELA and science. And then, again, at the middle school, iXL, like I said, there's this ongoing pinpointing of student data, where they are grade level-wise, their ratings in math and ELA. And again, we are looking at this data during wind planning time, data team, our literacy committee, and then teachers can also use this as a resource in their tier-one instruction. There's grade-level skills that they can also assess to students when there's a need. So, here's a bunch of graphs from Galileo. So, the way you want to look at this is, the bottom, the x-axis, is the exceeding meeting, partially meeting, or not meeting, and those are our ratings that are on the MCAS. And so, the four bars represent our three Galileo tests last year and last spring's MCAS results. So, the yellow bar is what our grade 10, on the first graph, grade 10 ELA got on MCAS in this past spring. Our yellow bar on the math grid is what our grade 10 performed on the math, and then the blue, orange, and gray bars represent the three Galileo tests we took last year. The graphs on the left, again, Galileo Science, same thing. There are the three Galileo Benchmarks that were given throughout the year last year, and then the yellow bar is the actual results on the MCAS that was given in the spring. And so, the DBQ graphs are a little different, because there's no MCAS comparison. The document-based questions are scored, the highest points students can get are 12 points, so you'll see a category of students earning 9 through 12 points, 5 through 8 points, and 0 through 4 points. So, again, what's nice is, as we went from the first DBQ, the blue, to the yellow DBQ, the number of students that got earned 9 through 12 points increased, which is what we want. We're teaching them writing, and they're improving in their writing. And so, this is the same information, the same graph for our middle school data. So, again, you see an ELA and a math graph with, again, the three Galileo Benchmarks from last year and the spring MCAS results. And again, a repeat of the Galileo Science that we did at the middle school and our DBQs or civics tasks that were given at the middle school. And again, the writing's going up. And so, the question is, benchmark working? I mean, again, I think the big, the big thing to hone in on is the increased use of iXL at the middle school. Again, that, that whole school approach, like, we're all, like, we're all in on this, and it's just that ongoing data, like, right at any moment. Christine does a nice job in her wind planning. She runs reports for her teams. We looked at grade six data the other day, and it was, here's where our kids are right now, and that data's really important. And like I said, we also revised the Galileo Benchmarks to give us a little better information with how we align to MCAS, and I think those are important shifts that we did for benchmarking. And all I will say is, on the last, there's a last slide that just talks about, like, next year, or where we're at so far. So, for the, for the middle-high school realm, I think we've seen successes already on our ELA Galileo first benchmark with percentage of accuracy, and specifically, our grade nine biology. We're happy with, with the results we've seen from the beginning.
Before Jessie leaves the podium, any questions about the secondary benchmark?
I didn't ask this question the other day at Curriculum Sub. So, how were these results shared with your staff at middle school? Is just at your, I mean, not just, at your small meetings?
So, we have a variety of meetings. Once a cycle, teachers engage in a wind planning meeting typically run by Ms. Fornier. There's a curriculum time meeting, that's once on a seven-day cycle, where I can share that data. I also have these in just spreadsheets all in my Google Drive, and we could be sitting at another, a data team meeting. And, oh, does anyone have a spreadsheet with this data on it? Boom, we can type it up between the two of us, like, we've got, we've got the data there. So, if it hasn't already been uploaded into Open Architect, which is another resource that teachers are using to kind of find the comparisons, we've got the data pulling reports from iXL from Galileo that is regularly being shared with teachers.
So, do you, do you think, I know we're becoming a more data-rich culture, and it's getting more buy-in in our staffs. Do you think the, is there's an impact of seeing these scores? Do you know, are they satisfied? Are they, I know you have your list of things at the end that you want to do differently, but sometimes it just lights a fire under you to say, gee, I know those kids can do better than this, and, you know, so I'm just asking, basically, the general conversations of...
I've, I've seen that motivation, even as early with, we took the grade levels, Christine and I took the grade levels through even an item analysis of last year's MCAS results, right? So, that's like, that first piece of data that we had when we came back in August slash September. And digging into what, what happened, right? And what do we think about this? And so, I definitely think that the staff's motivated. I mean, they're, they're ready to go. We, because of the notes we keep from each of our meetings, we're able to go back and say, okay, remember two meetings ago when we talked about adding poetry in or adding in more constructive responses? How, what are we doing? And then, the teachers can say, like, here's where we're doing poetry, here's where we're entering in more constructive response. So, the language is just common, and we're constantly revisiting it. So, yeah, I, there's, there's a lot of some really great work going on. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you so much. I know, we're all, we're all excited.
Moving my glasses, yeah, up and down my glasses. We're going to kind of ping pong a little bit. We didn't practice this, because Lisa usually throws this nice presentation. Do you want to go first?
Sure.
Yeah, Ira. Lisa with WhoStep as well, Lisa with Barbara.
Yes. So, similar to the middle and high school, there are a variety of different benchmarking that we use, both BES and BIS, some of which is more towards just BIS with the MCAS that we have. But at each of the schools, we have writing benchmarks that are done three times a year. We have happy numbers, which is new to the schools, that is being utilized, and then we have what's considered homegrown math assessments that we're using, Ola, which is our reading inventory that is done in the fall, winter, and spring. And then, we have Galileo at BIS for both literacy and math, and then we have the MCAS at the end of the year. And BES does not have Galileo.
So, benchmarking working. We give those three times a year. The information is constantly used somewhere, and you were just asking about that data culture, and are they using it? And that was something that we kept hearing a lot in the past, is that we're gathering all this information, what do we do with it now, right? And are we just testing the students, or are we actually using the information that we're gathering? So, this is really a constant conversation in both of our buildings, whether it is creating the wind groups, whether it's looking at the growth in those groups, progress monitoring how the students are doing, and using that information to drive our tier-one instruction. Conversations are happening on a weekly basis in the common planning time for all the grade levels, or even able to incorporate some UA time for them to be able to get in and ask those same questions. The benchmarks are given during our wind blocks, so that the students are not losing instructional time. It's actually a time that they've already pulled aside and have in their schedule, so that's when they're able to give that benchmarking, so they don't feel like they're adding something else to their plate, or students are losing the curriculum once they get to a moment. how the students are doing, and using that information to drive our tier one instruction. Conversations are happening on a weekly basis in the common planning time for all the grade levels, or even able to incorporate some UA time for them to be able to get in and ask those same questions. The benchmarks are given during our win blocks so that the students are not losing instructional time. It's actually a time that they've already pulled aside and have in their schedule, so that's when they're able to give that benchmarking so that they don't feel like they're adding something else to their plate or students are losing the curriculum once they get the momentum going. The teachers have access to Open Architects as Jessie was just speaking about. And in addition to common planning time, between math team, literacy team, and our data teams, and even MTSS, I would say, are really looking at that information. At Bourne Dale, we've started to have our data teams run faculty meetings, and they've split up the entire staff into groups. So a group might include ESPs, UA teachers. We started it last year, and for them to see through the lens of what the benchmarks actually were, they don't administer them, so they don't see them. But they were actually able to associate that with how the students are working in their classroom or how they're presenting information to their students, which was really a unique lens. So we have that set up, and the data team actually is running that next week with the staff for beginning of the year data, and then they'll do the same for the middle and end of the year, just to constantly keep that conversation going.
So, again, very exciting graphs. I keep thinking I can't, it's hard to be, how emotional that was. So we're trying to really make these sound really, really pretty. So they're set up for all grade levels, just like the middle school and high school. So you will have on your, I'm going to use your X axis, I'm going to use math terms, you'll have your exceeding, your meeting, partially meeting, and not meeting with the three times a year that we give the benchmarks in writing that you'll see there. And then you'll see the different grade levels. So I'm trying to look very closely at it. And what, what is really nice to see is, you can definitely see the growth in their learning as they continue throughout, throughout the school year. So at BIS, as I said, we do have the Galileo, and this graph is set up using the comparison to the MCAS. So starting with that yellow, far white line, that is how the students performed on last year's math and literacy MCAS. And so the, the blue, kind of the orangey color, and the gray are the beginning, middle, and end of the year. And so we're looking at the gray comparison to that yellowy comparison to see how it correlates to how the students had performed on the MCAS. So that's kind of that direct correlation piece right there for both math and ELA.
And then this was our first year of bringing happy numbers in. We had done a pilot, and this was someone that came out of the math team. This test, so we were, right now, we're currently focusing on that yellow group because those are the students that are currently partially meeting at the beginning of the year. So this test, it starts all the students off at the same spot, and then as the students begin to take the test, it's adaptive. So it kind of recalculates if something is too difficult for the student, it will back up a little bit, and is really kind of trying to find that sweet spot, if you will, of where that student is performing. One of the things the teachers really love about this program is that if you go into one of the reports, it will actually tell you how long it would take to get the student to the next level. So if you stay on their path and their trajectory, they'll say, okay, in two weeks, if Liz stays on this, she'll move to the next level. So it really gives you that plan in moving forward. So this is where our conversation is right now, is bumping all those partially met kids into that meeting and exceeding category.
And the same could go, we'll go for BIS. We are focusing on those yellow students where they are partially meeting. As Liz said, it's been really interesting because happy numbers is so new, and it's a very cute name, and everyone is actually enjoying it so much, so it actually does have a direct correlation of how people feel about it. It has been really interesting to start to be able to dive into the data, and so asking about the data usage. There's a lot of reports that are able to be accessed through happy numbers to then help with that trajectory of usage and even target skill that teachers can then use outside of using the computer program for lessons that they're using, either in their tier instructions within their class or in their win groups. So there's a lot that we're still uncovering in what these reports can give us, but the teachers have really been self-driven in, in kind of finding these reports and what these reports can, can uncover to really hone in on the instructional practices. So it's been really, it's been really cool to see, you know, how much they've enjoyed working with this program. So we will skip to our side. So some takeaways for BES and BIS in previewing for this current coming year. The teachers and the math committee selected the happy numbers. So this is a teacher-selected intervention, and it's definitely been utilized, so you can see the investment in using it. And it's, we're able, similar to IXL, to pull real-time data, which has been really, really helpful in those planning meetings. We are using CPT time to continue to build that data culture. And again, I think that the teachers are really, motivation is one, but the, the fact that they can hone in on specific target skills that the students might be lagging in or exceeding in has really been really eye-opening for them and helping us to make some very important decisions. Open Architect is something that we're still utilizing. It helps us to really hone in on a variety of different data points, from MCAS at the third through fifth grade level, to SWISS reports, to the OLS score. So it's a really kind of one-stop shop, but it also breaks down the skill sets in that the students have strengths and areas for growth in. We are still working in conjunction with Allison Mella at both levels to help us to continue to improve our math workshop model and utilizing the data that they're pulling both in happy numbers and their instructional practices to drive that differentiated instruction during that workshop time. And then our literacy team continues to focus on phonics and writing supports as we have identified those as, as areas that we want, we need to continue to grow in.
Yes.
So at BIS, are you using Galileo for math?
We are using Galileo for math, and yes.
And happy numbers.
And happy numbers, yes. So the Galileo, happy numbers is done, it's more of a placement as opposed to a benchmark, an end-of-year benchmark. So it's a placement and it kind of, it gathers information on where the students are to put them on their own trajectory path, where Galileo is an end-of-the-year assessment that we give to see, you know, how the students grow throughout the year. So currently, we're using both.
So but are using, is Galileo being used at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, still, and end of the year? So it's three times a year still? And then this is just...
It's just ongoing, it's an ongoing intervention that we use, like, I think.
Okay. But, okay. It, it just seems like at BIS, there is a very strong correlation between MCAS and Galileo. Like, it's like almost exactly the scores. So I don't, I don't know how much, you know, I don't know. Is there a lot of stock being put into those scores throughout the year for the Galileo tests?
Stock meaning...
Like, is it, are those, is that data, I'm just curious, that data's being used, do you know what I'm saying, to drive instruction?
So currently, it's not being utilized to drive intervention instruction because it's an end-of-the-year assessment. It's helping us to drive instruction for the, for the tier one supports throughout the year, because it is an end, so our third graders, it's assessing what they should know at the end of third grade, where happy numbers is telling us if they're behind and lagging in certain skills. So one's helping more with an intervention, while the other's helping with the tier one instructional component of it. Did that answer? That could, yeah.
So Open Architect sounds like it's a pretty comprehensive storage area, like Fort Knox for all of our data, right? How comfortable are teachers using it? Because we've, is this our second year or how long have we been, had Open Architect?
I, I...
No, we got it for a little piece of the year as a pilot, and, yeah, it's our second.
Second full year.
So we're, we're still getting...
It's one of those things that they're, when they're comfortable with the pieces they're using, they say, okay, now show me something else, right? Instead of showing them all at once and then not really wanting to use any of it because it's overwhelming. So they, they find the bits and pieces that they need, and they've been using those reports and seeking for it.
Yeah. And I would, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, look, the happy numbers, is that something that the kids have, like, their own login and they can do it outside of school too?
Yeah, that's awesome.
It's basically IXL, yeah, like, it's that, it's like IXL.
It's similar, it's very self-paced. I don't know as much about it.
IXL, the diagnostic snapshot is what you're talking about, the placement, and then it, it self-corrects.
It's sent you.
Sounds very similar.
So it's not, like, I guess I was thinking of it, it was like this big assessment the teachers had to do at certain points of the year.
No, 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 it's now just ongoing. It's just, once you log in, everybody takes that placement test so it can give you your own trajectory.
And they do their practice activities.
Yeah, okay. Yep, thank you.
In a loose way, if you think of Imagine, where they go on and on their little path, and it keeps recalculating, kind of setting them off, except they really enjoy this one.
Good. So it took the place of Imagine?
In a sense, in a sense, yes.
So then they don't have to do Imagine math as well? No. No.
Imagine that. Yeah, yeah. And what was really great is the teachers chose this one. So it, you know, in theory, it is doing something very similar to what Imagine, in theory, should have been doing. But again, this is something that they chose, kids like it, it's doing the job, which is to keep them engaged and show their fluency and keep moving them forward.
And the biggest part is they really do see the correlation between what the students are working on, on those activities, and what they're trying to teach in the classroom, where they're able to stick into those skills. Is it generalizing? Are they performing in one way on happy numbers, and are they seeing that in the classroom as well?
That's awesome.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. So I don't know if Jessie, if you've already, did Jessie already give this slide?
Yeah.
Perfect. So that is the benchmarking.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So I'm going to keep going out of order, just to get through the things that these folks would be talking about, and then we'll take up the reports from, from other folks here. So I'd like to do, if you would bear with me, and look at the votes for the grants. So vote to accept the Middle School Career Connected Learning Partnership Grant, and vote to accept Innovation Career Pathways Planning Grant, and I believe Christine is presenting on both of those? Someone, Jessie's doing the one for the high school.
Yeah, Jessie's.
Great, thank you, because Lisa's over at the volleyball game.
Yeah, so Jessie actually did quite, Jessie should present the vote. Jessie did quite a bit of work as well to help us secure the Middle School Career Connected Learning Partnership Grant, which does, will write off the tongue. So that is a $20,000 grant that is aimed at giving middle school students exposure to both college and career pathways. We have accepted, received the grant, accepted the grant. It's going to support a number of activities, some that are already in place within the building, and some that are being newly developed. Our sixth graders already for the second year will be participating in a theater field trip where they go to a working, it's the Lyric Stage in Boston. They get to see the various jobs behind the scenes at a stage, so they get to, like, see what a stagehand does, see what the set designer and builder does, and then they get to see the play in action. So that, it will support that, which is, I think, a really cool career opportunity that most people really think of. You just kind of see a play and think it occurs. It will support seventh grade, an opportunity for them to partake in some mini internships. We have already started talks with the high school internship program as well to kind of have a connection there. Eighth grade is going to get to do a career exploration day, similar, again, in sort of a pared-down version to what the high school does, where students will get to pick a field trip that is in a career area of their interest and engage in that. And then we will run a career fair for all of our students, grade six through eight, so that they can have some exposure to different careers and the pathways that might be required to enter that career, whether it be technical school or, you know, four-year college, whatever it might be. And we are also, through that, looking at adding, and this is something that we've talked about pre-K through 12 as well, but adding some additional guidance, tier one guidance curriculum in with that grant as well. So it's supporting quite a bit of exciting work, and we'll be kicking that off shortly with some postings for some teams to engage in the planning work mostly, so.
So we'd be looking for you to vote to accept before we can expend the funds, the school committee votes on it.
Do we need to, can we do them together, or do we need to...
They're separate grants, but you can do what you'd like.
Okay, well then, so, want to make a motion? For the middle school?
I move to accept the Middle School Career Connected Learning Partnership Grant. Second.
All those in favor of accepting the Middle School Career Connected Learning Partnership Grant?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Dr. LeBrea would speak so much more eloquently than I, and so, the ICP, Innovation Career Pathways Planning Grant, so this is for a pathway that I believe DESI calls information. I look at it, at it as computer science. So, you know, through, through the work of Anne Marie Schrod and Kim Iannucci, you know, school-to-career pathways, leaders, surveying students, kind of thinking about the, the industry and what jobs are available, and we just felt like it was really natural that this was the next pathway that we applied for. Again, we, we have three DESI pathways already at the high school. We've got business, life and environmental science, and health careers. And so, information, we actually, you apply and you get the planning grant, and you submit your application to be approved. Kind of, it's weird that they, they grant you the money and then they're looking for your application. So we, we are meeting our timelines and we are on the, the path to, to get approved. I think we're in good standing because we, we've been successful so far with three pathways. So this planning grant is really going to go into the work of investigating and looking into Project Lead the Way computer science courses. So this can fund teachers taking training in Project Lead the Way, cyber security and computer science essentials, which would partner up with the AP computer science classes we already offer, Computer Science Principles and Computer Science A. So we've got this, like, well-established right now in the math department to build this pathway. And then again, curriculum writing work once the teachers take the training. So that's our grant. Great.
It's always so exciting to see these grants come out. Just another pat on the back for their, their faith in what we're doing and to continue to foster our growth and curiosity in what we can offer our students. So very impressive.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the Innovation Career Pathways Planning Grant.
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the Innovation Career Pathways Planning Grant?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I thought it was very eloquent.
Well done.
Right. And the last thing that I will take out of order, thank you, and thanks for being, your patience, is our announcements. So, so we're at the calendar events, live district calendar, past events report, and I'll do first the upcoming events preview. Is there anyone, I don't know if any of you are, are ready to talk about the Bourne celebrates Culture and Community Resource Fair? I don't want to steal your thunder. No?
I was going to, just that, I have one student from, from elementary school that's going to be joining the middle school and high school.
We have a number, that's all I have as well, we have a number of middle school students performing with me.
Awesome. So I do want to make sure that everyone knows that this is the place to be tomorrow. Please come, please bring your family, bring your friends. It is a free, open event. We will have first the Community Resource Fair, which, as you recall, will have lots of tables, lots of different organizations from all throughout Bourne and throughout the whole Cape. And it's really great, I mean, they'll, they'll have swag, they'll have, I will be face painting again, so bring your little cute faces to me. And then there's just so much to do to learn about what's, what's available in the community of all different types of resources. And then at 6:30, we kind of flip a switch a little bit, and the resource fair shuts down, and we have, we also have a really amazing live event, and that's Alex Torres and his Latin Orchestra. It is not an orchestra when you think about violins, it's a salsa band. It's like a 12-piece merengue salsa. It is, people are going to be dancing. And with that said, one of our amazing Spanish teachers, Mrs. Gomez, she is bringing friends to come and teach people how to do salsa and merengue about 20 minutes before, Jessie? 30 minutes before?
I think so, right, I think six.
I don't know how it's going to, it's going to be exciting. I don't know where it's going to happen or how it's going to happen.
I was just excited.
It's going to be really exciting. So please come, bring your dancing shoes, and then I know people will be, you know, standing the whole time. Now during the day, what's really, really cool, and this is what the principals were talking about, Alex Torres is doing two assemblies paid for through NIE and through some other resources. So all of our kids will cycle through the assembly during the day. And then we have a workshop right after school for student musicians, including one from BIS, many from the middle school and the high school, and they'll perform with the band and then perform that night. So it's going to be a really, really fun event. And we know we have a big auditorium, but we do hope that we can fill it, so please remind folks to come tomorrow. Everyone out in TV land, please, please come tomorrow to the high school, it'll be the place to be. And also, there'll be dinner. The Rotary is giving us hot dogs, we will have ice cream for kiddos. So, I mean, if the face painting wasn't enough, then I really, I really hope you come down for the music and the food and the great resources. All right, and so, school leaders, if you have other things to say about your preview for the month or any past events, thank you so much.
Thank you for taking us out of order too, so we can hopefully catch some of the...
I know, I know.
So I know you'll hear from everybody, we love being a part of the military community, and we each try to do something a little different to recognize our families. Our students at Bourne Dale love to keep the tradition going on of our sideshow, so we have families send in photos, staff, students, and some community members will send them in as well. Photos of veterans that we compile together and play the sideshow for students during our lunches, and they get to share stories about who those veterans are for them. And we also share that to the community as well. Families send in letters that we get to send out to different veterans that they may know, so we make sure all those letters go out. And one of my favorite parts is receiving letters from people who are deployed or veterans that don't necessarily live around the students, and we surprise them on that day with those letters, and they get to read them. Some of them are very moving. One of the ones I received today is from a father who just got deployed, and in reading the letter, he's talking about when he gets to see his son again... letter, he's talking about when he gets to see his son again, when he's in third grade, a year from now. So it's just, it's absolutely exceptional to be a fly on the wall for those. That night, we have our PTA glow run, but we've put a little flair on it. It's gonna be a red, white, and blue patriotic glow run, so it'll be all red, white, and blue. We hope to have some local community heroes there as well, so that's available for families. On the 13th, His World's Kindness Day, so our school adjustment counselors are putting together some great activities for staff, students, and families to complete at home while we're there, the umbrella of kindness. Mara Dankert has worked with Terry Johnson to put together a library card night on Thursday at the Jonathan Bourne Public Library. We currently have a backpack food drive going on. We are looking for non-perishable food items for our families. All of the food that we take in goes to Bourne Public Schools families. That need has increased again, so we are looking for some donations to be able to pack those backpacks to send home with our students. And on the 19th, Mrs. Burden is taking our grade-two students to the Young People's Concert up at the Cape Cod Symphony, and they are going to be seeing Peter and the Wolf in an interactive instrument demonstration. So, it'll be very fun.
Thank you.
The kids, it's actually kids.
So between that and the letters from the veterans, I'm gonna go home crying tonight. My children, what happened to you?
So, although it'll be different than other, you know, other school community meetings, but I'll attend when I can.
So I have to say, I'm super excited to be part of BORN for this Veterans Day celebration, because, as Liz just said, I'm hearing and seeing all of the different events, some of which I'm learning still each day. I just, driving back in today, we had a meeting, and BIS is gonna be lined with a bunch of flags in support of our veterans that students put out with Ms. Holden's class today. And that's just, it was just so moving to see a bunch of flags in a box that we had. We also have, one of our after-school clubs, our K Kids, that is facilitated by Courtney Costa and Catherine Olson, who have written letters to our veterans within their group, some of which are being mailed out, some of which are gonna be shared with veterans that are coming in for our breakfast, which is this coming Friday at 9:00 a.m. in our media center. And that is actually put together by Anne Marie Writings. And we currently have approximately 70 veterans and students that will be attending that day. And hopefully, it's not top secret, but I did find out today that we have a veteran on staff, Sherri Correa, who is our STEAM teacher. I didn't know she's a veteran. And so she is going to be celebrated at BIS. So that was very, very exciting. And we do actually have two military families whose fathers have been deployed, so we're trying to get some connection with them that day, and then be able to speak to their son or daughter during the breakfast. It was, you know, been able to do in the past, so we're trying to work some magic to be able to do that. And then, this year, part of our MTSS team, we're looking to build in some in-school community events. And our first was on Halloween, and our second is going to be the two days before Thanksgiving break, which is the 25th and 26th. And those will focus on BIS gives thanks. So we're gonna be putting together, through the MTSS team, some activities where the students will be able to give thanks for the people in their lives, and give their thanks for what they have. And Anne Marie is also putting together baskets for families to then deliver that day for Thanksgiving, for Thanksgiving. So, there's a lot of, for such a short month, filled with so much love, that it's super exciting to be part of this year.
That's excellent. That's awesome. Thank you.
So Addie did a great job spotlighting our spaghetti supper. I do wanna just thank our PTA and all of our parent and staff volunteers, everyone who donated food, who donated time. It's a big, huge event to pull off, and so I really appreciate all of that. Other notable events recently, our Unified Bocce team participated in their first match. They did a great job, and it's just a really fun sport to watch them preparing for. Huge thanks to Coach Alexander for getting them ready for their match, and also their teachers and student athletes and peers who did a great job. Carrie Bosker, our theater teacher, and a number of student performers treated us to a wonderful night of talent during the Second Annual BMS Coffee House. This year, they paired with our new middle and high school STEAM club. The STEAM club's talent was that they used some chemical reactions to blow up some things, and light some fires in the cafeteria, and it was really cool. And some outside, actually. And they also built their own popcorn machine, and then sold popcorn. So it was very fun to put those two things together, and it was a really great night. Our eighth-grade science students traveled down to BIS to lead a lesson for fourth grade, right? And just thank you so much for hosting them.
I was waiting for it to be on the ceiling.
So, it was really, yeah, like, maybe a little messy, but very fun. And we just really appreciate BIS hosting them, and they were really learning to kinda lead those lessons and teach the kids about more chemical interactions. And our BMS civics classes organized a school-wide mock election, where all of our BMS students got to participate in the democratic process, which we really were appreciative of. Upcoming, we are, as Carrie said, we're looking forward to our middle school band students participating with the Alex Torres Orchestra tomorrow. Our BMS military families will be joining with BHS military families for lunchtime on Friday. And then, all of our grade-eight civics students will be participating in the Veterans Day Assembly with the high school students. So many thanks to Steve McCarthy, Cindy Burden, and Sharon Moore, who collaborated across the two buildings to organize this event. Our eighth-grade civics students will also be organizing a flag display on the BMS campus to go with the BIS flag display, to recognize our veterans. And then, our big event coming up is the annual churchy trot, not to be missed. We really changed the, I'm telling you, it actually really is not to be missed now. We changed the whole, this kinda format of it last year, so all of the students are outside for the entire time. They were all in the stands cheering on the other grades while they were running. This year, we promised that the, we'll be able to get the music working in the press box, so there'll be a really fun atmosphere. It was great. It went very well last year to have everybody participating for the entire time of the run. And then, students will also be participating in some gratitude activities that day, and similarly, our guidance does arrange for dinners for families in need for Thanksgiving. So, again, similarly, we've got a lot happening in just a couple of short weeks.
Thank you.
So I'm presenting the high school. So congratulations to the BORN soccer team. They finished their season in the playoffs yesterday. Of course, good luck to volleyball tonight, and football on Friday. Report cards for quarter one will be published on Friday. The National Honor Society is running a food drive through November 8th with a competition between the classes for the class that brings in the most donations. All items will benefit the BORN food pantry. The high school, like has been mentioned previously, BHS will be hosting a salute to veterans on Friday, starting with a complimentary lunch at 12:30, followed by a ceremony of remembrance and honor through speech and song. With the coach night for the winter athletic season will take place on November 18th at 6:00 p.m. All athletes participating in a winter sport and a parent caregiver should plan on attending. DECA is running Teacher Trivia Tuesdays. This is gonna help the staff learn about DECA and win some meat prizes in November. They also have opened up the new spirit box. It's in the, it's in the hallway. And former NBA player Chris Heron, he'll be coming to the high school to talk about substance abuse prevention on November 26. And the winter concert for the high school will be on Tuesday, December 3rd, at 7 o'clock, which is the day before your next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. May I add a couple of things? Sure. To that, if you don't mind?
So we're having the bonfire, the Tuesday before Christmas, Thanksgiving. And then, we're also doing a powder puff game, too, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. So, we're doing those simultaneously, so that should be really fun. All are welcome, communities welcome.
Is that junior and seniors, or the whole school?
The whole school.
Or just sweets and the powder puff?
Oh, no, just juniors and seniors, I believe. Yeah, yeah. And we're gonna try to get the football team in the tutus to cheer. They don't know yet, but I'm gonna buy them. Yeah, so that'll be really fun.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good night.
We also went to the country last week, too.
Oh, gosh.
They put together bags for their Thanksgiving, but they made it about 30 students go.
Oh, that's great. I saw pictures of that. Yeah, that's great.
They put together around like 200 bags, I think.
Wow.
Yeah, that was really a fun, real trip.
My goodness, that's awesome. So I'll speak really quickly for my report, the rest of it. So strategic planning update, we had one major meeting already, we have another one coming up next week. We had close to 900 surveys filled out. They are kind of cleaning them of any identifying data, whenever their name's put on or what have you, and then they'll get loaded into the three folders. There are three groups that are gonna be pulling all that data apart, everything from MCAS to enrollment to facilities, and really working through that, and hopefully, starting to get a semblance of a plan together. So it's very exciting work. So thank you to everyone who actually filled out the survey. Like I said, they were, I think, close to or right around 900.
Mine, the surveys filled out?
Yes.
Wow.
Wow.
Amazing.
And the committee will be able to see, like, how many of each, and what place. But yeah, it was, yeah, I think the, if I remember the numbers, I don't have exact, there were a good amount of staff surveys, and then also student. We had, I believe, almost everyone at the middle school, and then a good chunk at the high school. So, yeah, I think it's probably like 380 student surveys. That was very good.
That's great.
Yeah, it was right under 1,000 of the total surveys. So, for the budget timeline, again, this is something that folks can kinda read on their own, but I just wanna highlight a few things. So tonight, we'll have our capital outlay plan that hopefully you'll approve. You, we will, you know already about the November 19th meeting. We had today, here, on 11/6, we had building-based meetings, so every single principal and their team met with the whole central office team for sometimes well over an hour, and went through every detail of every single thing, of every possible budget item. And that's really the beginning of our discussion, as we create all of this budget. So we're well into budget season. And then, there, also to call your attention, 'cause some of these will happen prior to our next meeting, there will be some meetings with the town about capital, where we'll be presenting all these things that hopefully you'll approve this evening. And then, we just kinda keep rolling through the budget season. The town will have something put together for all of their budget in January, and then hopefully, you will have a budget preview at your February meeting, that's February 5th, with our hearing being in March, and that is the March 5th meeting. And then, we march through all of the other budget meetings with the town, and then hopefully, we get to a place in town meeting where it's approved. So, you can see all those pieces, and it links right back up to next September 2025, where we begin again, planning for the next season. So that's there, just for you to see kinda the different types of things we're talking about in the different parts of the school year. We had our budget presentation, and our benchmarking presentation. I think we're moving right into Mr. Geist, Budget and Facilities update.
Just a couple of quick updates on the facility side. We discussed a septic issue at Bourndale last time around, that's been resolved. Big thank you to Ted Buckley, and to the town sewer department for their assistance in helping to rectify that situation. I've gotten a draft proposal for the chiller design at Bourne Middle School, and the small improvements at the wastewater treatment plant should be getting underway shortly. And I also have a request in, from tie and bond, for the design of the wastewater treatment plant RBC project. That is from capital that was previously approved. I've also requested a new feasibility study for the middle school roof from Gale and Associates. The last one's several years old. And so they really just have to do some updating, so the price is below the capital threshold, so you will not see that request on the capital plan. Basically, we have to get a new number to then request funds from the town for next year for the middle school roof. We'll talk about that middle school roof plan during the capital discussion. We spent some time going over the end-of-the-year report at Budget Facility Subcommittee meeting as well. Didn't know if we were gonna review that during that time period.
You can just do it all now.
Cover it now?
Sure.
Sure. So I just basically went over the total expenditures that come out of the report. So for newcomers to the committee, one of my jobs, I love, is, you know, taking every dollar in and categorizing it, recording out on how it's spent. And it's a labor of love. So, just talking about, what does it cost the town to support Bourne Public Schools? These are all like the big numbers, and some of the other grants that then come into play as well. So if you recall, last year, our operating budget was $25,917,722. I'm sorry, those were our total expenditures. The operating budget was $25,918,363. We had a small turn back to the town, $640.91. The town also supports the schools beyond just the school committee budget. There's a lot of shared costs, employment insurance benefits, all healthcare, all of that. And that came in at just about $14.5 million. We expended $1.5 million in federal grants last year, another $1.4 in state grants. That includes military mitigation money that we get. We spent just under $1 million in circuit breaker money. Private grants, which is basically just the NII grant, came in at about $145,000 spent. We spent just under $1 million on school choice. And then, we have a couple revolving accounts that are also tracks as well. The athletic revolving account, we spent $87,000 out of. That's one thing that we're gonna have to, you know, continue to absorb into our budget, is that revolving fund is depleted now that we've eliminated fees for athletics. Money still does come in through gate receipts, but it's not a significant amount. We spent about $900,000 on food service for our students last year, and Medicaid comes in at about $105,000 spent. So the total all-in number for Bourne Public Schools last year was $46,637,730.
And if you looked at all those tabs, you can see all those numbers that Jordan lovingly entered.
By hand.
By hand.
Yeah.
Wow, that's impressive.
Did you open up the spreadsheet?
We'll be sure to look, yeah.
It's a lot of fun. Yeah, it's, like I said, it's a labor of love. It's one of those projects that you just have to dig in and put your head down, get to work. And that concludes my report for this time.
Thanks.
Thank you. Questions for Jordan? All right, moving on to Chris Oliver, technology.
Technology update. Thank you, Dr. Joe. So on October 29th, the Bourndale Elementary School had their Wi-Fi replaced, which was funded in part, as I had mentioned, by the federal ERE program. The new Wi-Fi covers more area, and is faster, and now more robust. I also attended a webinar last week, where Desi shared that they are changing and updating the MCAS testing platform for the spring 2025 MCAS test sessions. Desi will be moving away from the TestNow platform, and to the, and moving to the MCAS student kiosk. What that simply means is that the software program that the students use in the Chromebooks will be changing, will be removing that, and putting a new program on all the Chromebooks, as well as there'll be a new interface that administration and teachers have to use for MCAS testing. So, I look thoroughly, look forward to the rolling out of the new testing platform, with lots of testing and infrastructure trials to come. You may or may not know that we now own two full-size Anamarch dissection tables?
Yeah.
As well as 10 tablets to complement them. They were all purchased through grant funds. A representative from their company, Anamarch, they actually reached out to me, and they wanted to know if they could come out and offer some training free of charge, due to our commitment, investment in them. So they'll be coming out here tomorrow morning. At the high school, we'll be working with our staff on some professional development on the tables, which is really good.
That's really nice.
I will also be submitting a grant for $25,937,730. I will also be submitting a grant for twenty-five thousand dollars to the Massachusetts Technology Collaborative. This is due the seventh thirty-fourth and is for cyber resilience. There are some prerequisites that had to be completed that included testing of our network by a third-party company. But if we received the money for the grant, that would, that would go towards cybersecurity and making our, our network more secure. A total of eight staff attended the Massachusetts Computer Using Educators Conference at Gillette Stadium on October sixteenth and seventeenth. This year's theme was beyond the surface. Dozens of instructional technology sessions were offered and there were several keynote speakers over the two days, including Secretary of Education, Dr. Patrick Topwiler. And I got to say that everyone, all the teachers that went, I asked them to send me an email the following week as to something that they, they took away from the conference, something that they maybe could see used in Born, and I was very, very surprised and happy to see the number of different topics that they took away and that we'd love to see here. So definitely worthwhile sending that group of staff over there.
What schools were represented?
So this was at Gillette Stadium. So this is.
But, I mean, from our middle school staff and our high school staff?
We had middle school librarian, BIS librarian. We had a science teacher, an ELA teacher. But yes, someone from, I believe we were sending there from every school to answer your question. And then last but not least, this was really cool. On October eighteenth, the third day, we had three days in the royal conferences, but on October eighteenth, a group of Born staff attended the Day of AI Summit at the MIT Media Lab in Cambridge. Born was part of a group of about three hundred educators from all over the Commonwealth that was invited to attend. The day consisted of discussion, discussing the evolution of AI development, the importance of having an AI, AI policy in our district, and how AI can be used for both teachers and students. It was stressed that AI will quickly become a part of our everyday life. And keynote speaker, Jeffrey Riley, who is the former commissioner of education for DSE, stressed that we as an educational community have a duty to get out in front of AI, unlike social media, we really didn't get out in front of social media. They're really trying to partner, they're partnering with MIT and really trying to, this day of AI, just taking off and really pushing out the importance of educating not only staff but students across the state of AI. And I actually, one of the keynote, I'm sorry, one of the breakout sessions, I had the opportunity to, in my group, work with a, someone from a nonprofit from Washington DC that did nonprofit represents, they worked with commissioners of education across the country and they advised them on key issues. And he was attending this session at MIT because he knows how forward-thinking Massachusetts is and he wanted to see how we were doing it in Massachusetts to take away, take back to the nonprofit in DC and work with other states and how, and use Massachusetts almost as a template. So I thought that was really cool. The working group who attended the summit, we've already done that in debrief with Dr. Starkey. And I will be moving forward with developing a policy in the coming weeks to be shared and vetted with multiple groups and committees across the district. That's all.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
And last but not least, student services and special education.
Thank you. So the special education admin team attended a conference in Devens where we attended with Alan Bloom, Laurel Palatier, and Jan Hollenbeck, who've all kind of been part of other professional development with us specifically regarding the new IEP. And this was a little bit more finessed into a little bit more of the intricacies, not the kind of the big picture and where we're going. So it was very useful and allowed for a lot of robust discussion regarding how to continue to get student voice to be the primary factor in, in the development of the plan. So it was great. In addition, there were some legal requirements reviews, which was always helpful of the document. And we took that training and then we fostered and we've been pushing between the three of us, we've been pushing into staff meetings and, and department times and going over kind of all the updates that we've been getting. So that was helpful in addition to the session that we had yesterday for Professional Development Day. So continued ongoing collaboration with Chris Oliver. Thank you very much. Our transition, not only with the new IEP, but to the new platform Empower School. That data warehouse is becoming a little bit more finessed and a little bit more user-friendly, so that's always a good thing. And then I also attended the mandatory DSE training for McKinney-Vento, which is all the policies and procedures regarding our homelessness. So we're proud to report that Born has following all of its mandates and we are doing above and beyond what we should do for that population of students. So that's a good thing. And then we had five staff members also become certified to become trainers for QBS, which is Safety Care, so that we'll have at least one in every building to help facilitate training regarding de-escalation strategies. So that was, that was a huge success. And last but not least, two out of the seven submissions for our tiered focus monitoring report has, have been uploaded. So thank you especially to the special education AAs, Kate Hartley, and all the principals for helping get, pull all of that documentation that is quite monthly together. We're plugging, we're chipping it away. But that's it.
Thank you.
Any questions for Kristin? Great. And if Barbara was here, I'm channeling her right now, you would hear all about the phenomenal Professional Development Day that happened. Was that yesterday? That was only yesterday?
It was just yesterday.
It was. So again, all of our staff members had some shared experiences with Kalise Wernham, who you, many of you met before, and also with the National Seed Group. And then also with many different aspects of the uniquenesses of our students, everything from McKinney-Vento homeless to using AI to incorporate universal design for learning, which is helping all kids access the curriculum, to, you know, safe schools for LGBTQ plus to Title IX. Like there were just so many presentations led by both our people, which were really wonderful, that so many stepped up. We have some great experts in our midst and also some really renowned outsiders too who came in to work with us. So I think it was a phenomenal day. It was really energizing. People walked away with a smile even though, you know, it was, it was a long day, a lot of thinking. But I think it was, again, a big success. If she was here, I'd pat her on the back in a big way and all the people who pitched in to help. So really, really great. That concludes my superintendent report.
Okay.
And thank you for listening.
All right, subcommittee reports. Curriculum Subcommittee?
We, as you heard, had the benchmark presentation and we also had the English Language Learner Student Programming Presentation that was given to the staff. Very, very involved and very informative of, of how many students we have in our district and the different classifications and monitoring that goes on while they're here, whether they're just coming in as English Language Learners or whether we're just monitoring them. So it's, it's quite, quite the process. It's very informative.
Thanks. I'm going to skip Policy Subcommittee for a minute just because we have quite a few votes and I'm going to go to, was there anything additional you wanted to add for budget and facilities?
Well, we want to look at the five-year capital plan.
We need to vote on the five-year.
And we need to vote on that, yep, and the overall capital request.
Right. So let's look at the five-year capital plan. I mean, we discussed this, but is there anything additional you want to?
Well, Jordan got an update for the elevator. So you can see for FY twenty-six what we're, you know, in addition to the five-year plan, we're looking at what we're asking for for FY twenty-six. So the elevator renovations came in at a more solid price today, just before our meeting at two hundred fifty thousand. You can see our Jackson Field bleachers are on there.
Oh, gosh, thank God.
I dropped the whole design, seventy-five percent in the floor.
Yeah, accessibility, yep.
Oh, my gosh, that's awesome.
New flooring for the auditorium, AD office and guidance suites. The, that's removal, right, of the solar arrays, the small.
So this, I struggled with the title for this one because it's really a two-part project.
That's the project manager one, right?
So this is for the, fifty thousand dollars for the solar array project, solar arrays. There are two different solar arrays on the middle school that need to come down. The large one, which is owned by WRE, formerly Con Ed, they're responsible for the cost of removing it and restoring the roof to its pre-existing condition. And we are hiring an owners' project manager, an OPM, to oversee that work, to make sure everything is done up to par as far as architectural standards when it comes back to restoring that roof. The second smaller part is possibly contracting with another, another couple of contractors to remove the small solar section. WRE doesn't want to take on that extra work and then the associated roof repairs to go along with that as well. So that's what that one is for.
You referred to the middle school roof that we were talking about later. Do you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just always want to keep that in the forefront because in our last year's five-year plan, we were going to request the money for the roof this year. And as we worked through the process, and thank you again to Morley and Kendall for, you know, these meetings are long. They signed up for a lot. I think we did two hours last Friday afternoon to go through all this and work through everything. So there's actually like three different plans on this five-year plan. And the go-it-alone, go-it-alone plan is most likely the one that we are going to end up with. So we're going to request that money next year after we get a solid number from the feasibility study that we will fund ourselves for this year. So that three-point-five number may be good. It may change based off of the feasibility study. It'll give us an updated based off of current market conditions price to replace that roof. So I separated out, at the bottom of that five-year plan, there's a couple of footnotes. And this is really just to keep the town informed on different scenarios that could play out. So the first footnote is if, when we apply this March for a statement of interest, which basically says we're interested in applying for an accelerated repair program on our roof, which is really a misnomer because it's not really accelerated, but what the asks would be. We're not, even though there's an FY twenty-six request for fifty thousand dollars, that's just to let the town know that we might have to make that money available. The language that the MSBA uses is very specific when it comes to the actual town board vote. If we want to change it, it all has to go through legal vetting on the MSBA. So it doesn't really make sense to ask for that money and then, and vote for it because then we'll just have to rescind the vote and do it the way the MSBA wants us to do it. And they strongly discourage you because of all the legal requirements from voting for money for a feasibility study, which that money would be, that fifty thousand, prior to being accepted into the program. They give you ninety days from being accepted into the program to secure the funding. They know, they understand how, you know, town budgeting works and capital planning works, so that there's flexibility. We ran into this when we did the high school roof several years ago. We had to rescind the vote and then go through the process, but they worked with us. So most likely happened at fall town meeting or a special town meeting in FY twenty-six. So that's the March twenty-five timeline. It's highly unlikely that we'll get accepted into that program because the roof would just be twenty-five years old at that time. They haven't accepted a roof that that's that young in probably, in quite some time. I think it's back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. And if you might recall, they shut down the program last year. So there's going to be some pent-up demand with older roofs probably taking precedent because it's not like an unlimited supply of money. So the next timeline, if we're not accepted based off of that March twenty twenty-five, pushes the project out even further because now they're moving to a two-year cycle as opposed to an annual cycle. So the next opportunity to apply, put your statement of interest in wouldn't be until twenty twenty-seven. And even though it's called accelerated repair, you're not looking at construction until twenty-eight or twenty-nine. Most likely twenty-nine if we go and wait that long. So the committee feels strongly that we need to move forward and request the money for next year based off of a good, solid number from a, from a new feasibility study. So that's our plan. There's several new additions to this plan. They're all based off of the, the asset spreadsheet that, that we've been working on as, as a group. So you'll see there's a lot of things coming due in twenty thirty. If you just look at the totals. And happy to answer any questions by any specific thing that you see there.
Questions, again?
All right, I motion that we approve the Bourne Public Schools' five-year capital plan.
Second?
Okay, we'll roll call vote to approve the five-year capital plan. I do not believe Maddie can vote on anything budgetary. Am I correct? I mean, Addie, sorry. Maddie, sorry. So Carrie?
Yes.
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 Maureen?
Yes.
Yes.
I say yes, okay. Five-year capital plan approved.
Okay, and I'll make a motion to approve the FY twenty-six capital request as presented.
Your second?
Second.
Okay, so all those in favor of approving the fiscal year twenty-six capital requests? I opposed. Okay, capital request approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Maureen. CPAC, did CPAC meet?
So I do have an update from them. That's okay. So we will be having a table at the Resource Fair with our newly printed CPAC fire. So they are also hosting a virtual event in December called the Emotional Brain, which is being conducted by clinician Joanna Silverman from Pilgrim Area Collaborative. And in January, they're hosting an event regarding financial planning for families, for considerations for families with members who have significant disabilities. So they are well on their way. All of the events have increased some more members, so I'm happy that it's being successful.
Thank you. Maureen, is there an update on the collaborative?
There is. On October eighteenth, the board voted to select Dr. Hope Hanscom, the Assistant Superintendent from MASHPEE, as the next Executive Director of the collaborative, pending successful negotiations, which we are nearing the end of. So I hope to have an update for you next month.
Excellent. All right, thank you. And thank you for all of your work because that was a lot of work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee?
So I have an update from Jessie. The DEI committee had its initial meeting on October eighth where there were some new and returning members, where we met and discussed some goals for the year. Additionally, members were excited and engaged in the DEI-themed PD and have been promoting the Born Celebrates Everyone event for tomorrow. The next meeting is December tenth at three forty-five in the BIS Library Media Center. And as always, everyone is welcome to attend.
Technology Committee?
We did meet. The Technology Committee met at Bourndale on October twenty-ninth. There was a small group of us, about five. There was a small group of us, about five. We started off having conversations to brief in around MasQ because everyone that was there had gone to the conference. We also discussed some of the biggest day-to-day challenges that we're facing teachers, especially, it was mostly representative of Bourndale, the teachers that were there, we did have some BIS staff, and just how to work through that. Coincidentally, one of the biggest problems was the Wi-Fi there, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping that the next meeting that we have there, that problem will be solved. We also had some good discussion around AI in the classroom.
Okay, thank you. There's a new District School Wellness Advisory Committee, has not yet met, haven't heard. But there's a date?
I'll be covering that, but I just want to jump back to budget facilities.
Oh, sure.
Some for just one brief comment. We also had MJ.
Mr. Andjelis.
Mr. Andjelis.
We had a guest.
Come in with an agenda item. So we had a little bit of a discussion about the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan and possible future use of the wastewater treatment plant on campus, which would be years down the road, if at all even possible, by the surrounding community area. So it's just one of the many things they're looking at to come into compliance in reducing the nitrogen, nitrogen loads on our, on our water sheds. So it's something down the road, she just wanted to bring it to our attention, that it's something that they're looking at. And we said, I think we just said, please look at it, and, you know, years down the road.
Okay, thank you.
We'll be interested to hear more.
Yes. So the Student Wellness Advisory Committee is a group composed of, well, should be a group composed of parents, teachers, school staff, students and/or the community, and it focuses on the health and wellbeing of everyone in schools and the community. It's also responsible for assessing the wellness policy that's in place, monitoring goals and setting action items. And it's supposed to report out on an annual basis to a school committee and the superintendent on goals and objectives. Any school in the country that takes part in the, the school breakfast and lunch program is required to have a wellness advisory committee. MGL 111, Section 223, and 105 CMR, Section 215, requires the establishment of the SWAC, as we call it, as well as the standards for school wellness advisory committees. They're required in Massachusetts to meet four times a year. I want to give a huge shout-out to Dr. Starkey, who is a master at scheduling thing. I really leaned on her. We are co-chairs of it. She set up all the meetings and I'm just really going to take over from there. So big thank you to her. We got a great response from a lot of different staff members across the district. Andrew Arkey, Jesse Clemmons, Kathy Cleary, Chris Cushman, who's our new food service director from Chartwell's, Nathan Dineen, Rebecca Esip, Kathy Johansson, Michelle Kenyon, Ellen McLaughlin, Lisa O'Hanley, Jennifer Ward and Samantha Zeal. So really a great mix of PE, health teachers, some assistant principals, curriculum people and our nurses as well. We did meet already one time on October 10th. We were just really sort of dipping our toes in it. We've got a lot of people who have served on the committee for years. And we need to jumpstart the committee because this is also going to be part of the audit that we're having for food service this year as well. Our next meeting date is December 12th at 3:30. Then we have another one scheduled on February 13th at 3:30, and then April 17th at 3:30 as well. And we also need a school committee liaison. Just throwing that out there. We do them all Zoom as of right now.
Well, if anyone wants to do it, it's up to you. I don't mind doing it. I did it years ago.
When was it, me? I was...
It meets at 3:30. Just three more times this year.
I would do that. If it's like later in the day, that's perfect.
Yeah, and it's Zoom.
Okay.
Listen in. We sort of haven't found our direction yet. We're still trying to solve the, like, one of our, one of the things that we have to do is go through a formal assessment of our policy and then how well the policy is being implemented. And we really haven't even tracked down what the existing policy is. There's, there's a couple on, online, so we're still in the infancy stages, leaning heavily on the members who have been there before.
All right, another labor of love.
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right, good, back to Policy Subcommittee. Policy Subcommittee met on the 16th of October, and we discussed the mask policies AC, ACR, ACA, ACA-R, ACAB, ACGA and ACGB. And all of those policies have been changed, updated or added due to the changes in Title IX. And those are, there's a legal update in your file that I sent to everyone. They're mandated by the law. We need to abide by Title IX, and they all have to do with harassment, the harassment and discrimination policies. So we, as a Subcommittee, met, I'm trying to move on here. And we decided to move them all forward to full committee for a vote. Since there wasn't much we could do, I, we did go and clean them up and kind of organize them a little bit, but we couldn't really change much of the wording because, again, they all were updated to abide by the law. So we have several that need to be voted on this evening or discussed, if you would like to discuss them. There are policies AC, non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. Policy AC-R, non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. Again, there's a lot of redundancy here. Policy ACA, non-discrimination on the basis of sex. Policy ACA-R, non-discrimination on the basis of sex under Title IX, including sex-based harassment. ACAB, sexual and sex-based harassment and retaliation. ACGA, civil rights grievance procedure. ACGB, Title IX sexual discrimination grievance procedure. That one just kind of explains everything. So, were there questions regarding those policies from the committee? Because I've sent them twice, you've had them for a while.
I just had a question about the, the Title IX compliance officer. Is that somebody that's on school committee? Is that an administrative person? Is that somebody that is voted in?
Barbara.
It's Barbara.
Is it going to be a, a big deviation for the grievance procedure changes based on the new language or training or, I mean, I don't know how much overhaul. I was just interested in how much overhaul it would mean to the district to comply with the new language.
I think the new language is more around the categories of what you can't discriminate against.
Okay.
That's my understanding. And if Barbara was here, she could give a lot more clarity, but I don't think much else has changed, except they're codifying it.
Yeah, and I just, I could be wrong, sorry. But I know, pretty sure she was just, there was a new training that just went out on the changes for her role specifically, so if there are any major changes, so, but, you know.
We, we actually didn't have many of these policies in place. We only had a couple of them. So we're actually adding the policies. I'm going to look right now.
I remember we first started on this, you and I in this committee, I think we had the first couple.
Right. That was it.
Yeah.
Right, and so a lot of these, we just kept as mask, provided them to us.
I just, the staff has to go through the slide deck at the beginning of the year and sign off that they've, you know, read everything. And so I was just wondering what it meant for change in the district, that's all.
I think she could give a clearer answer. But we are currently in compliance because we had to be by the beginning of this school year, so whatever had changed going into this school year has already changed. But then these policies needed to change to be in compliance, that we have to have policies. And like I said, some of the wording on there also changed, and you could see those. It's just describing the categories that we shouldn't be harassing people for.
So one thing that I actually had called Emily about was, so I was reading through them, and I noticed that some of the wording was, you know, it's, it would be sexual harassment to ask individuals about, you know, when the first time was. Like, there's certain verbiage like that. But then I pulled up some of the curriculum that we have for the sex ed curriculum, which actually asks those questions. And so it kind of got my wheels spinning a little bit, that if the policy says that sexual harassment and we put that in place that says, if you ask these questions, I mean, you know what I mean? It was just kind of like, then I went into the, the sex ed curriculum piece and was kind of going through, because they talk more about sexuality and, you know, your experience and how old you are, like, those types of things are part of the lessons. I thought from the school committee position, like, I don't know if that's, I don't know what that, you know, brings to us. And I'm sure bigger people out there have already thought about that, but, you know, word for word when you look at the policy and then you look at some of the lessons, I don't know if you guys can speak to that. It's kind of interesting, maybe pause.
I cannot speak to it at this moment because I'm not sure what, what and where you're referencing, but I'd be happy to take a look at that if you want to send it our way. I mean, obviously, if we have a policy in place, we won't go against our policy. I also wonder, you know, if there's been changes, I know there's been changes in the standards, the health, health curriculum standards, so perhaps what you're seeing, did you see it in Atlas or where did you see?
No, so it was right in the, the mask, let's see.
You don't mean lessons, you mean like the frameworks?
Like, it was the frameworks, and then within the frameworks...
So it's not in our curriculum?
No, no, no.
Okay, you didn't find it in our Atlas website?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Nope, not at all. But that's what made me think about it, because I know that the, the program just changed, right, the curriculum just changed.
The frameworks changed, yes.
The frameworks changed. So then, when you, when you go on the website, you can click on different lessons that are within that framework that we don't have to necessarily use.
Sample lessons, yep.
Yes. And then I was like, wait a minute, that's kind of contradicting what, what our policy is saying you can't do. So it just kind of opened up, I don't know.
We won't, we won't break our own policy once we voted in, but also this policy's based on law that was just passed?
Exactly.
Which is not, you know, the frameworks were passed prior to that, so I'm sure it'll be looked at, yeah. But thanks for clarifying, I was concerned it was like a lesson thing you saw from our teachers.
No, no, not at all.
Okay, great.
It was just kind of looking through that and...
Okay, noted, yep.
So then we need a vote to approve the policies as listed on the agenda, policies AC, ACR, ACA, ACA-R, ACAB, ACGA and ACGB.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor of approving listed policies? I opposed. Okay, policies are approved. The other quick little discussion points that we had at the Policy Subcommittee meeting, we talked about the cell phone policy. Currently, the middle and high school have procedures in their handbooks. It's been the talk in other districts around the area about having procedures and policies regarding cell phones. Middle school has the away-for-the-day procedure, high school is, the phones are only used as needed. These are new changes, so we're going to revisit these decisions towards the end of the school year to see if it's necessary to put a policy in place or just keep it as a procedure. So we'll, we'll talk to the building administrator to see how they felt like it went after the school year. But it is nice to know that there are two very, two procedures in place currently of those buildings. And then the other topic was just the assistant coach job description. So currently, we have a head coach and assistant coach for our sports, and BPS is doing away with volunteer coaches. Most districts do not have volunteer coaches due to liability reasons. Coaches need to be trained and vetted. A new position is going to be created, and it's going to begin this winter season, and the position's going to be an associate coach, will, will be hired based on the amount of players, the type of sport, location, whether it's a contact or non-contact sport. So only some teams will have this associate coach, only if it's necessary for extra support for that team. And so the BEA also will be looking at the job description since it's going to require a second, and it'll be listed in the appendix of the contract. Any questions about policy? Excellent. Okay. So we just have a couple votes left. That's all of the Subcommittee reports. We just have a couple votes left. We have a vote to approve an increase in the rate that adult meals to $5. I don't know what it was, four or fifty?
So, so last year, we had to increase, we increased to four, and we have to increase again to five based off of just the thresholds of the food service program.
So that's just for teacher meals? Make a motion again?
I move we approve the increase of adult meal to $5.
Second? Okay, all those in favor of approving the increase to adult school meals to $5? I opposed. All right, that's approved. And then we also have a vote to accept a donation in the amount, in the amount of $115,847.73 from the estate of Gary Paul Kerouac, to be used to establish a scholarship fund.
I move to vote that we approve the donation, to accept the donation of $115,847.73.
Second?
All those in favor of approving the donation, in that amount? I opposed? Okay, donation.
Are members of his family going to administer the scholarship? Or, we don't know yet? We have to accept it first and then?
I believe it'll be in house.
No, it's all in house.
Our guidance department and...
Okay. And do we know what the connection is?
Yeah, it's not a town name, right? We don't. We were, we were contacted by the attorney of the estate, and then a check was sent. So I do hope we can find out those connections and can honor and thank the estate.
Exactly.
If there's family that's remaining, we would, we would like to show our gratitude.
Yes.
So is it just in, like, establishing a scholarship fund? Is it going to be something going forward, you think, or?
They believe it'll last for about 25 years, so it's really great for our town.
So thank you to the estate of Gary Paul Kerouac. Much appreciated. I think that is all.
Well, we got one more thing. We have to vote. I'll move to approve warrants 17 and 19. We didn't, we didn't, last time we didn't approve 17, I don't think.
Oh, you're right, yes.
And so, then we just got one today. Okay.
A second.
Okay, so we need a roll call vote to approve warrants and payroll.
Yes.
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 Okay, yes, okay, approved. Thank you, Maureen, for bringing that to our attention. And then also, we need a vote to approve regular session minutes from September 11th, 2024.
So moved.
Any discussion, questions?
Second?
Okay. All those in favor of approving regular session minutes from 11, from September 11th, 2024? I opposed. Excellent, approved. All right. Is that everything? Our next meeting is December...
Fourth.
December 4th. And the mask conference is this week. And thank you to Maureen for being our delegate, representing our vote. Took up at our last meeting. And I think that's all for school committee. Any final?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
And do we have to? Yeah?
Move to close school committee meeting?
Second, but, okay, roll call vote to adjourn. Carrie? Spot on? Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, thank you. Needing adjourn.